We will be led in invocation this evening by Counselor Kelly, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance to the Flag. Please stand if you are able.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Officer Merrill. Thank you for being with us this evening. We have tonight three public hearings. Madam Clerk, would you please read item 5A?
Granting a forty-year, non-exclusive franchise to Columbia Gas of Virginia Incorporated to install and operate pipes, mains, manhole connections, meters, and other facilities for the distribution of natural gas within the public right-of-way of the city of Fredericksburg.
Thank you. I will call upon Mr. King, our Public Works Director.
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor, members of council. Yes, indeed, this evening, item 5A is a public hearing granting a forty-year, non-exclusive franchise agreement to Columbia Gas of Virginia. Columbia Gas, as you may be aware, is the sole provider of natural gas throughout the city of Fredericksburg, and this franchise agreement allows them to install and maintain their natural gas distribution system throughout the public right-of-way of the city. Columbia's current franchise agreement expired in December of 2016, and the original franchise agreement for Columbia actually dates back to 1956. There's been a series of renewals of that original franchise agreement with various predecessor companies, and the current franchise, which has expired, is again, is what we're renewing or proposing to be renewed this evening. The Public Works Department has been working with the city attorney's office, as well as with staff who are here this evening from Columbia Gas, to develop terms of a new agreement, and all parties have agreed upon the terms and the language in that agreement that is being presented this evening. Columbia desires to continue serving the city with natural gas, and it is legally entitled to a franchise agreement on the terms comparable to those granted to other franchisees. Columbia Gas has invested significantly within the city of Fredericksburg in the maintenance of its natural gas system. I can tell you, because I worked very closely with them over the years of around 2008 to 2013, that the company replaced all of the remaining cast-iron gas lines throughout the city, mostly in the downtown area of the city, with new, modern, plastic gas mains. Also, the company has recently completed, within about the past five years, a fairly extensive inspection program of its system, and have identified issues and corrected those problems during the inspection process. The company has been working well with the city, with the Department of Public Works, and staff believes that the terms of the agreement are favorable to the city, and we recommend approval of the franchise agreement pending comments from the public during the public hearing process. And I will say that we do have two members from the gas company here this evening from Columbia Gas. We have Mr. Boarden Ellis, and we have Ms. Monique Finneran, I hope I pronounced that right, here this evening to respond to any questions, or if you'd like to give him an opportunity to make any comments before the public hearing.
Thank you. Would the applicant like to make some comments, or just take questions from now?
Thank you, everyone. We just like to say we appreciate the relationship we've had with the city over the years, and we'd like to continue that relationship, and if there are any questions, we're happy to address them as best we can.
Thank you. Any questions from Counsel Divine?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I did have a question or a comment about, I guess, Section 11 of the agreement, which talks about restoration. And what it says is promptly after performing any work authorized under this franchise, Columbia shall at its sole expense restore all streets, sidewalks, landscaping, water, and sewer mains, and other public property affected by the work to the satisfaction of the city. I just wanted to, I guess, point out that in the past, there've been some issues with that, as far as when Columbia comes in and does any testing or repairs, there are times where patches don't seem to last as long as they should, or that streets have been sort of torn up, and it's almost like a rumble strip. And I guess, to enter a forty-year agreement, I'd like to be assured that our streets are going to be maintained to a high standard.
Of course, we can definitely appreciate that, and we always work, our restoration efforts are always trying to, if not put the section, place, area back to the same position or better. So we're constantly looking at the contractors that we work with to do that, and if something's not right, we always try to fix it. So, a lot of times, too, you have, sometimes asphalt doesn't attach, there's all kinds of chemical reasons, there's interesting things. I wish I could say it was perfect every single time, it's not, unfortunately, but we will always work with the city to make sure it's right, so that the standards are met to what the city's standards are.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. Anything else?
Counsel Frye?
Thank you, Mayor Greenlaw, and I will piggyback on Counsel Divine's, and just to throw it out there, Maverick Street is a perfect example. It kind of goes like this, and it's a short street, so I just wanted to, I wasn't even thinking about that, but I do want to say to Columbia Gas, and you can go back to the office and tell everybody, I want to say thank you, it's an old issue, but I want to bring it up now. When Hazel Hill Apartment Complex was without, what happened was, you guys did your job, and you did a great job, and there were some leaks on site, so I would say that you guys saved some lives, because when you did a repair job, you found the leaks, and which meant that the gas service couldn't be turned back on at Hazel Hill Apartments, and there's a lot of folks that live over there, so the fact that you guys found a leak and did a thorough inspection, I just want to say thank you, guys, and then it was a good effort from your company to get gas restored, and it really affected a lot of people, and I just want to say thank you. So just, whenever you go back to the office, just let folks know that, you know, we appreciate it.
Thank you, appreciate those kind words.
Counsel Kelly?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Two points, and building on what Counsel Divine and Counsel Frye brought up with regards to repairs, this might actually be a discussion with our own Public Works Department, when we talk about being repaired to city standards. I think we might want to relook at that, because basically, patching, as you know, patching in and a hole, when the water can still seep in around it, is what's, in a lot of cases, causing this, and we have talked about covering larger areas in a repair than just filling in the hole and filling it over, and I'm assuming that, I can't hold you responsible for that, because you are following city standards, but I'm assuming that if we were to make some tweaks to city standards, that you guys would be willing to go along with that?
Of course.
Or at least be part of that conversation. I don't want to put an undue burden at the same time.
Absolutely, we would work very closely, and we've worked really closely with.
I mean, I'm assuming, staff, that makes a little bit of sense, we might want to talk about that a little bit more, about what our standards are?
Sure, and any changes that you're aware, we would be fine, we would work very closely with you to make sure that those are in line, and that everybody is happy. We obviously want to do what's right.
Okay, and the other issue is, and you were not here the last time, the Commonwealth Gas was before us, we're about to embark in an archaeological ordinance, and you guys are, in a lot of times, digging in sometimes relatively sensitive areas, even going, dealing with your existing lines. So I brought this question up the last time you were before us, about how you would deal with anything that you might bump into during the course of a dig, and I was told that Commonwealth Gas has a process and procedure in place that we will deal with issues like that and take care of those assets, and I'll tell you, within two weeks, got a phone call from somebody down in Winchester Street, as you were basically hauling away plates, bottles, and everything else in the back of the truck to dispose of. So I need to hear from you that, and again, you're not going to run into it a lot, and I realize it's an expense, but it's very important to us in our history.
Of course.
That, again, I had somebody from Commonwealth Gas sitting up there saying, hey, if we run into something, we'll be on the phone to you, we've got a process and procedure, didn't work two weeks after, I need to hear from you guys on how you're going to deal with that issue in the future.
Okay, I will definitely take that back, make sure that I get communicated across our organization, that that's a key component to the relationship we have with your city. Of course, the history here is incredibly important, so we want to help preserve that as much as possible, and we will work with our employees to make sure if they find anything to raise a hand, a voice, anything to let us know, so that we can deal with it before they action upon it.
Okay, we don't want, I understand that this is, we're asking for a little bit of a different, more of a layer of issues that you'd not normally deal with, but we now have a preservationist on staff, and it would be nice if something were to crop up, that we would at least have an opportunity to take a look before we took any other steps.
Absolutely, absolutely.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Weathers?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I think part of the agreement talked about getting together with city Public Works on a long-term capital improvements planning for you. Explain to me how that works a little bit.
Can you jump in?
I can address that, Mr. Weathers. Typically, each year, we share information with Columbia Gas on projects that the city is undertaking, such as our annual asphalt paving program, and we listen to Columbia Gas as to areas that they have major capital projects that they plan to do, so that we can kind of link those two together. Again, our goal there is to try to avoid situations, I know we've had this years in the past, where sometimes we would pave a street, and then soon thereafter, the gas company would have a project where they would want to renew their lines, and that's where we'd get those rumble strip situations, where we have a series of patches on a fairly new street. I'm hoping we've avoided most of that in recent times through that coordination. Again, it's an annual, generally, it's an annual process where we converse with the gas company on our projects.
And I'm thankful for that. I know where you have problems, you may have to go in and dig, well, we recently, that's understandable, but I hope we work closer together, try to minimize that as much as we can. Thank you all.
Sure.
Thank you very much.
Yes, Mr. King?
I just wanted to also respond on the issue of the repair work as well. We have, in recent years, ramped up our standards for repair work of our city streets, not just for the gas company, but for anyone who works within our city streets, and has to cut open asphalt, or sidewalks, or so forth. And again, in years past, there were times where the gas company or others would come in, and they would just, you know, make cuts in the street every so often, where they had a customer, and so you had a street cutter, each customer, and they would patch that on an individual basis. That's changed, and one of the most prominent, I guess, changes that you may or may not notice that, was when the gas company upgraded their system in the downtown area. One example of that would be the 1,000 block of Princess Anne Street, where that segment, that area was, actually, it was more than that, it was also the lower 700 and 800 blocks, I think, of Princess Anne Street as well, where the gas mains were replaced, the service lines were replaced. Years past, you would have seen possibly a long cut with individual patches. The gas company, at our request, actually went in and repaved an entire lane of traffic through there. We, at the same time, had cost shared and repaved the additional section of lane that was not impacted. So what you saw at the end of that was a fully paved street. It was, again, it was kind of a cost shared, combined effort, a one-dig project, if you may, where we combined efforts, and so it's virtually unnoticed, and that's kind of our goal, and how we do these things is so that these patches are done and don't really notice those. We realize we do have older sections of our city with older street pavement, where we still have those rumble strip approaches, and we will try to work on those as well.
Excellent, thank you. This is a public hearing. Is there any member of the public present who would like to speak to this matter? If so, please come forward and state your name and address, and observe the five-minute time limit. All right, I don't see anyone coming forward, so I will declare the public hearing closed. This is on our agenda for a first read this evening.
Madam Mayor, move to approve ordinance on first read granting a forty-year, non-exclusive franchise to Columbia Gas of Virginia, Inc. to install and operate pipes, mains, manholes, connections, meters, and other facilities for the distribution of natural gas within the public right-of-way of the city of Fredericksburg.
Second. Motion's been made and seconded. Is there any further discussion? Please cast your votes.
Motion passes seven zero.
Thank you very much. Madam Clerk, will you please read 5B?
Granting a ten-year, non-exclusive franchise to New Path Networks, LLC, Crown Castle, for wireless and fiber infrastructure within the public right-of-way of the city of Fredericksburg.
I will call upon the Assistant City Attorney, Mr. Ekstrom.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Newcastle Networks, a subsidiary of Crown Castle, has applied for a franchise to install small cell facilities and fiber optic cable infrastructure within the city's right-of-way. Crown Castle is the country's largest provider of wireless infrastructure, with tens of thousands of cellular towers, and tens of thousands of miles of fiber supporting small cell wireless facilities. They don't offer any direct wireless service. Instead, they lease that infrastructure to wireless carriers, internet service providers, and institutions, and commercial entities with the need for that infrastructure. The proposed franchise agreement is based on the template agreement that city staff developed around a year ago, when the city was in the process of overhauling all of its right-of-way regulations. It was doing that in response to new state laws and to new council priorities. Since that time, both Mobility, LLC, and Cox Wireless have been granted small cell franchise agreements based on the same template. The agreement contains standard protections for the city, such as insurance and bonding requirements, as well as relocation and removal provisions. All installations proposed under the franchise are also subject to the right-of-way use ordinance and the design guidelines that were also adopted by council last year. The regulations strongly encourage co-location, as opposed to installation of new poles or other structures. They require undergrounding of utilities unless the Director of Public Works grants a waiver from that requirement, and they generally allow the Director of Public Works to determine the placement of any proposed facilities. The design guidelines adopted by city council apply citywide. Franchisees are required to use the smallest, least visible antennas and equipment, with colors and materials that blend into the surroundings to the extent possible. Structures are limited to an absolute maximum height of fifty-five feet in height, and they also must be lower than the average height of the utility poles located within a 500-foot radius of the proposed structure. Restorations must be performed to city standards, and we just had a discussion about that. The design guidelines also have added protection for the downtown historic district, and that is over and above ARB standards and required C-Perk review. The design guidelines require that any equipment proposed to be installed in the downtown historic district must be hidden by means of stealth design, whenever that's reasonably possible, and any exposed equipment must match the style, design, and color of the poles predominantly used in the historic district. The design guidelines also specify that the maximum height for new structures in the historic district is forty feet, and again, co-location is strongly encouraged. I would be happy to answer any questions about this proposed franchise.
Any questions for Mr. Ekstrom? Yes, Counsel Divine?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Sorry, I just had gone past the section I wanted to address, and maybe similar to what I had just brought up in the last one. Article 2, Section 2.1, talks about what you just said, granting me locate, construct, install, blah, 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 wires, cables, conduits, lines, all that good stuff, on our public streets, along our public streets. There are a fair number of utility poles that have wires dangling from them, coiled near, all that, you know, stuff, and I guess, you know, one of my concerns is that I don't want staff to have to follow up, I don't want staff to have to go around and sort of clean up after one of these companies that comes in, and that's what's been hap, or had to happen, because, you know, the way some of the projects are left, leave, again, leave cables piled up next to telephone poles or utility poles. So, how do we know that's not going to happen this time?
That's an excellent question. Is Mr. King still here?
It is an excellent question. I get to answer the hard questions. Yes, you are correct, Ms. Divine, there unfortunately are situations where we do have some dangling cables and wires and apparatus throughout the city on existing utility poles, and we do our best effort to notify those, the utility companies that are responsible for those, and have, ask them to make those repairs, and typically, they are responsive to those repairs. We always encourage citizens to report problems like that to our office, because what we don't know, we can't fix, but I can tell you that in most all cases, where we become aware of issues like that, we do report those, and within a time, the manner, those are fixed, and if they're not, we do follow up with those companies to request them to make those repairs. We don't, we also do not want, you know, from a public works department, do not want to see the dangling wires and apparatus, it is not only ugly, but also unsafe in some situations.
If I could just follow up, my goal is to not have your department have to deal with that. It's a waste of staff time, and quite frankly, you know, these companies should be responsible enough to not, you know, incur that in the first place. So I guess that's my goal for this and the next tenement, you know, I would just, I don't know how to put language in there that truly enforces that, or there's some sort of, you know, penalty catch, something, but it's just gone on, you know, for years with other companies, and I just, you know, we're awarding, you know, potentially, two more, you know, companies tonight with access to our city, you know, utilities, and I would just like to make sure that we're not, that we're keeping them in the manner to which we would like them to be.
We appreciate that, and that is something we can continue to work closely with our various utility providers, especially those who have cables attached to poles. One of, I guess, the, one of the benefits, I guess, of some of this new technology is that it is wireless technology, and we would hope that we would have less problems and issues with dangling wires and cables and things like that, because a lot of the new apparatus with the small cells, small cell technology being wireless, is that there typically aren't wires connected to those, so hopefully, that would be a reduction of the problems that you're referring to.
Yeah, and we are talking here wireless and fiber.
Correct.
But not all, but not all.
Not in all cases. Most, yeah, it's a reduction, it's not a complete overhead installation.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Yes, Mr. King?
I just, Madam Mayor, just wanted to also let you know that I was just also informed that we do have a representative from Crown Castle in the audience, I think Mr. Ron Wilson is here, so that if there are questions of council or anyone, we do have a representative here to answer those questions.
Excellent, I'll call on Mr. Wilson after I, Counsel Graham, you had your hand up?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. More of a, actually, a question for the city attorney or assistant attorney, and to understand the difference, jumping a little bit ahead, perhaps, in the agenda, but I noticed this is for a first read, whereas the next item is first and second read. Just a quick explanation as to the discrepancy?
That's a good question.
Madam Mayor, of course, city council generally holds first read and second read on different dates. Our next franchise applicant has requested that council act on their franchise application and vote on it on first and second read at this meeting, because of a project they have pending, which is time-sensitive.
All right, we, yeah, we can discuss that, then, so that's, it's a time-sensitive project.
Correct.
I got it.
I got it, okay. If there are no more questions for Mr. Ekstrom, I will call upon Mr. Wilson, the representative, if he would like to, if there's anything he'd like to share, or if there are any questions that the council would like to ask.
This is my coworker, Scott Nichols. He's the government relations representative for Crown Castle, I'm the outside plant engineer for Crown Castle, fiber construction engineer, and to your, Mrs. Divine's question about the dangling wires, we're very sensitive to that also, and a lot of that is typically older, legacy incumbent providers with their copper wires. The fiber optic cable that we use today is much more sensitive, so we're as concerned, if not more, than most of you are about that. It's much more finicky than old copper wires that are left dangling, so we always have our contractors neatly attached, and they have these items called snowshoes, which they wrap the cable back and forth for extra slack on. If there ever is any cables that are left untidy, we put a, at every pole, we put a tag with our name and number on it, not that we want you to have to contact us, but we identify, self-identify ourselves, so if any homeowner or representative of the city ever comes across any cable that is not up to the city's standard, that we can address it immediately. There's a network operations center number, which is manned 24/7, and then they contact us, and we have response times to go out there and repair it.
Yes. Are there any other questions from council? Yes, Counsel Duffy?
Thank you, Mayor. I'll just make one, I do appreciate the way staff does respond so quickly to neighborhood requests about the utility and mess at the utility strips, and especially Mr. King and his staff, and I agree with Ms. Divine, that it should not be an issue that we're taking on, but nonetheless, we do so very well. Thank you.
Thank you. Well, we have a priority of being the fastest city in the state, if not the nation, so we appreciate very much this opportunity to work with you.
One more comment about the downtown historic district and the sensitivity, we're well aware of that, and we have catalogs or pamphlets, when we do have to deploy the small cell technology, we have a variety of poles in which that we can blend to the environment very well. It doesn't always have to be on top of a utility pole, if it's a black wrought iron pole that you desire, concrete pole, white pole, we have a variety of poles that we can put the small cell technology on to make it as.
How large, how large are these boxes, or whatever I should call them?
A lot of them are, just look like the top of a telephone pole, and then they just have a couple of panels. Sometimes you'll see a small, like, electric meter on the side of the pole, so it's not that intrusive. Some of them will be, applied for, the applications on top of existing poles, so we wouldn't put new poles, but they have to go in and figure out where strategically the frequency is needed to fill in space that's desired to give the best reception.
Counsel Graham?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So for the, for the small cell technology and the other infrastructure that you're going to be installing in the city, or proposing to install, are you allowing multiple organizations to sit on top of that infrastructure, and if so, does that have any detriment to the connection speed, if you allow more than one organization to run across your infrastructure?
No, it would be on individual fibers. We bring a fiber optic cable to that cell, small cell. If more than one provider of the big four, whoever, if two of them go on the pole, they would each have their own individual fibers and equipment and panels. It would be very negligibly noticeable to anybody, I mean, to have a couple panels versus four panels or something up on top of the pole, but it would not diminish the speed at all, because they were on separate fibers.
Any further questions? We thank you very much, thank you for being here this evening.
Thank you.
This item, as Counsel Graham pointed out, is on our agenda for a first read this evening. Oh, I'm sorry, I'm getting ahead of myself, thank you for reminding me this is a public hearing. Is there anyone here who would like to speak to this matter? All right, now the public hearing is closed. Counsel, what's the will of the council?
Madam Mayor, move to approve on first read granting a ten-year, non-exclusive franchise to New Path Networks, LLC, Crown Castle, for wireless and fiber infrastructure within the public right-of-way of the city of Fredericksburg.
Second. Motion's been made and seconded, please cast your votes.
Motion passes seven zero.
Madam Clerk, please read item 5C.
Granting a ten-year, non-exclusive franchise to Tenembares Fiber, LLC, for dark fiber infrastructure within the public right-of-way of the city of Fredericksburg.
Mr. Ekstrom?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The proposed franchise in this instance is essentially identical to the one council just considered with. just considered with Crown Castle. It also advances city council's priority 29 to be the fastest city for broadband in the Commonwealth. The major difference is that Tennebrous is not in the business, the small cell wireless business. They are a fiber infrastructure company. They lay fiber and lease it to entities that are in need of that bandwidth. One notable difference to city's standard template agreement is that Tennebrous has proposed that in lieu of the one-time administrative fees that are typically paid to cover public works, staff time spent reviewing applications, Tennebrous has suggested that they be able to propose and the city be able to consider accepting in-kind contributions. Those contributions would have to be at least equal in value to the one-time administrative fees that we would typically collect. And the franchise agreement also provides that they would have to either enhance the city's existing internal fiber network that connects our public safety and other facilities or it would have to be something that would also advance city council's priority 29 or another city council goal or priority. I'd be happy to answer any questions about this franchise. Again, it's, it's very similar to the agreement that council just considered on the last item. Pardon me, Madam Mayor, we also have three representatives from Tennebrous here today and they'd be happy to answer any questions, as would I.
Excellent. Council Graham?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So if I understand this correctly, the city CIO gets the right of refusal for the particular in-kind contribution if it is not in line with the, or not perceived to be of the same value as the cash payment. Is that correct?
Madam Mayor, that, that is correct. The, the CIO, we do have an internal fiber network and our CIO is, is generally familiar with the cost of the types of in-kind contributions that we would consider accepting such as conduit and fiber. So she would evaluate whether that, that was equivalent, would be generally equivalent to the, the fee that we would otherwise collect. But the CIO would be the one considering that.
Right. Any further questions? Council Devine?
Not a question, but I guess just the same reassurance that this company would be, I guess, looking to make sure that our utility poles and strips and all those are going to be maintained at a very high standard, so.
I'll, I'll let the applicants.
They're nodding, so.
Would, would the, would someone from Tennebrous like to address that or any other comments you'd like to make?
Sure, Adam Noll. So our, Adam Noll, N-O-L-L, our practice, we sub out all the actual contracting work. So when we sub it out to our contractors that actually do the construction, we always hold a retainer back and thusly we inspect the work before they get the retainer. That way, if there are problems or fixes, they don't have their money in hand, they have to fix the repair before we'll make a final payment. We also use a local engineering company, Express Tech, and they'll be the ones that'll be doing the write-outs and managing the local network. Since they are local to this area, we like to use local folks that have eyes on the county and, and work with the county, or I'm sorry, with the city as well.
Thank you. Madam City Attorney?
Madam Mayor, the applicant might want to address why they're asking for first and second read on the ordinance tonight?
Yes, we would appreciate that.
Certainly. We were awarded a, a project with the school system. So we're working with Michael George and it's an E-Rate funded project, which means there's federal dollars involved. That, the federal money has to be used by June of next year and we just want to ensure that through the winter, not knowing what the winter's going to look like, that we have ample time to get it done to ensure that those federal dollars are used for the intended purpose.
Thank you. Appreciate that. Any, Council Duffy?
I just have a question of process. How did this work out that we were able to do this one dig with the school system? I appreciate that we're working hand in hand like that. Can anybody explain how that came about?
Mr., Mr.
I've been working, Tennebrous has been working with Mrs. Susan Tills probably for about a year, year and a half. And, and we're very pro working with the city and looking at the opportunities. By nature of our business, we're open and neutral. So hence why we like to do the like kind of exchanges and do things that actually improve the areas that we work in. So we're, we're, we're looking for a good relationship with the city as well as the school system.
So that would be the connection, you were working with Ms. Tills as, as well as the school system and that coordinated. She's pretty good at finding one dig opportunities.
I just wanted to highlight that in this grant.
Yeah, she, she's pretty good at that.
Yeah, we're, we're very much in favor of that.
Yeah.
And hence, by nature of us being neutral, we, we open up our, our fiber access to anyone that needs it. So we essentially create economic development. It's, it's the opposite of a franchise model.
Excellent. Any further questions? We thank you very much. Thank you for being here.
Thank you, Mayor.
This is a public hearing. Is there anyone here who would like to speak to this matter? All right, then I will call the, declare the public hearing closed. What's the will of the council?
Madam Mayor, move ordinance on first read granting a 10-year non-exclusive franchise to Tennebrous Fiber LLC for dark fiber infrastructure within the public rights of way of the city of Fredericksburg.
Second. Motion's been made and seconded. Please cast your votes.
Motion passes seven zero.
Move to suspend the rules?
Second.
Please cast your votes.
Motion passes seven zero.
Move for approval on second read?
Second.
Please cast your votes.
Motion passes seven zero.
Done. I hope you have a good winter to work because we don't want to, we don't want to move snow either.
I agree.
I know, Mr. King agrees with that. We've now come to the portion of our meeting where we have comments from the public who have signed up to speak before. We have only one person signed up and that person is not present. So we will move forward to the council agenda. Does anyone wish to add anything to the count? Vice Mayor Withers?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I would like to add a holiday for New Year's Eve.
All right, anybody else wish to add anything to the council agenda? Council Frye?
Gun Give Back, please.
All right, gun, but give back. All right, Vice Mayor Withers?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. As you know, last year, we came to an agreement with city manager. Our workforce went from, I think, thirty, five and a half hours to forty hours. And they also gave a half a day vacation on Christmas and New Year's Eve and then those holidays. You know, I don't think, I have to tell anybody around this horseshoe how, how hard this staff has worked this year getting things done that, that, that they've done. On top of that, Mr. Northern, Governor Northern has declared a full holiday for New Year's Eve for state representative, uh, state employees. So I, I would like to see us do the same thing for our employees. Like I said, again, I, I don't think any of us won't agree that the amount of work this staff has, has put. We, we, I've, I've said this before, we've got a great staff in the city of Fredericksburg. I hope the, the public appreciates that. So I move that we, we make New Year's Eve a full day holiday for our, our city employees.
Second. Motion's been made and seconded. Is any discussion? Council Duffy?
Can we put into the record about what the approximate cost of that would be? I think you did in.
Did we have a memo on that?
Madam Mayor, I did work with others to deduce that it's roughly a $14,000 cost to close city operations for a day. So there's a cost, yes, sir.
There is a cost and we can put that into the record.
Thank you.
Yes. Council Frye?
Could I have clarification on what that, how you came up with that? Is that, is that, is that cost of salaries or? Okay.
It's a, it's a bit of an older number, but it basically represents costs for secondary time for staff that, due to the nature of their jobs, which we have quite a few staff that are 24/7 shifts and things like that. We can't just, you know, let them off, so they may be granted holiday time or premiums. So that's basically what that's representing.
Well, again, I, I, I still think it's, it's well worth it for, for the amount of work employees have done.
Right. Council Frye?
Thank you, Mayor Greenlaw. Just, not the same subject, but I want to jump in on this one. If I'm not mistaken, I, I received a text alert that I think trash service was running on Thanksgiving Day. Was that accurate?
That was accurate. They picked up my trash.
Okay, yeah.
And I thanked them.
Yeah. Yeah, just on another note, in, in the future, maybe at a work session, I would love to discuss this because I'm sitting there thinking like, my schedule's crazy. But I'm, you know, when that, when that alert came, I was like, wait a minute. Now, you know, these guys are here doing trash and going to go home, maybe pick up their grandkids, you know, they got to jump in the shower and, and then they're going to eat turkey or whatever the case. And, and these folks are really missing out on valuable time. And the way the world is now, everything is about money. And it's like, you know, you're shopping on Thanksgiving Day and all this stuff, but you know, you rarely get these, my, my point is, I feel like a lot of family days are, are being taken away for a dollar and, you know, the family values are almost slipping away. So in the future, I, I'll, maybe in January, I'll throw it out there, maybe we can have a work session discussion about how we take care of our employees. I know they have a job and I know they chose a job and I know that, you know, our first responders, everybody's working. I get it, but it's just, you know, when do these guys have? When we have events, you know, these folks are the first ones there, the last ones leave. We're having a good time and they're working, picking up after us and, you know, all that good stuff. And like I say, everybody has a job, but yeah, I, I would like to see, you know, i- if they have to work on those days, what, what can we do for them, you know, once a year or something? I don't know. But thank you, Mr. Withers, and sorry for throwing that out there on a different subject.
Yeah. Now, we thank you for mentioning picking up the trash on, on Thanksgiving. They were at my house and I did go and thank them and they honked the horn for me. So, all right, we have, we, is that in the form of a motion?
Yeah.
Okay. And we have a motion and we have a second?
Yes.
Madam Clark? All righty, cast your votes.
Motion passes seven zero.
Council Frye, item 7B.
Thank you, Mayor Greenlaw. Just a, a simple reminder, I went all in detail at the last meeting, but just a reminder that the fifth annual gun give back is December 8th from 10 to 2. And I want to publicly admit that I am, it's a word that we came up with earlier, I'm, I'm undigital. So I had some email issues that I'm working on with the IT department. So that's, I don't know if that's a new word, but I learned that earlier when Mr. Graham asked me to provide him with something. So publicly, I'm undigital and I'm a little bit behind on my communication with the public. I, I received a few emails with folks asking for a little bit more information about it and when I went to respond, I'm kind of shut down right now. So I'm working on that as we speak. But once again, the, my, that's with my email, I'm having a problem with my digital sanity, I would say. But I will, I'll work on that, but once again, December 8th from 10 to 2, the fifth annual gun give back, 2,300 Cowen Boulevard at the Fredericksburg Police Department. And you can turn in any unwanted firearm, no questions asked. The Fredericksburg Police Department and Sheriff Department will be on site. You pull in like a drive-through and have the, the weapon unloaded if possible. We prefer that if you don't know how to handle it, let, let us know when you turn in that you don't know what you got going on and preferably in the trunk and pull in and, and somebody will retrieve your weapon. You don't even have to wind the glass now to talk to us. You can just let us take the weapon and, and just get out of there. It's, it's, it's like a U. You pull in and you just get out of there. So to date, we have 162 guns that have been turned in on a voluntary basis, nothing offered back to the citizens. So thank all citizens that have been participating and thanks to any and everybody who spreads the word. And that's all I have, Mayor Greenlaw.
Thank you, Council Frye. Item eight, council consent agenda. Does anyone wish to pull any item off? Council Duffy?
Can I just make a comment on one of the items?
Do we need to pull it off the consent for that?
If we're going to comment, you need to pull it.
If you make a comment, I think you do. Which item? You'll pull it up.
8C.
All right. Item 8C is removed from the consent agenda and we'll take it separately.
Madam Mayor, I'll move the consent agenda minus 8C.
Second. Please cast your votes.
Motion passes seven zero.
All righty, now Council Duffy, 8C.
Thank you, Mayor. I, I just want to comment on reading about the ordinance involving special events and making changes to that. It really is stunning, the number of special events that we have. And as we're thinking about our staff that works, I want to thank Michelle Horses in the audience as the director of Parks Recreation and, and Special Events and as the city representative of that. I just want to extend great appreciation for all that's being done and I, and I appreciate the planning that we're doing to make it work more effectively, to give that department the chance to plan for some of these larger events. So I just appreciate it.
Thank you for bringing that up and for pulling that out. We have had some special events that have been not, well, that they haven't had much time to prepare for. We've had some people descend upon us nationally with major filming events that our staff has done an amazing job of coordinating. Amazing, absolutely. It's, and it takes so much time and there's so many details to work out with Mrs. Shell Horses Parks and Rec Department and her event staff, but it involves the police department and involves Mr. King's department and they all work together. And sometimes they only have a week or so to pull it all together. So kudos to you. We thank you for it. All righty, item 8C.
All right, with that, I'll move, then, then the middle of the ordinance. Special events, ordinance to provide for a tiered structure for event applications and to clarify the effect of the issuance of a special event permit.
Second. Please cast your votes.
Motion passes seven zero.
We have two sets of minutes before us, the public hearing on November 13th and the regular session of November 13th. Are there any additions or corrections to the minutes?
Move approval of minutes as submitted.
Second.
Please cast your votes.
Motion passes seven zero.
We have several boards and commissions appointments. The Memorial's Advisory Commission appointment.
Madam Mayor, move to appoint Susan Spears to the Memorial's Advisory Commission.
Second.
Please cast your vote.
Motion passes seven zero.
The Board of Building Codes Appeals.
Madam Mayor, I'll move board to appoint Michael Taggart to the Board of Building Code Appeals. Second.
Please cast your votes.
Motion passes seven zero.
The Tri-County City Soil and Water Conservation District.
Madam Mayor, I'll move Richard Street be appointed to Tri-County Soil and Water Conservation District.
Please cast your votes.
Motion passes seven zero.
Thank you. The city manager's agenda, item 11A, is approving the trademark license agreement from S.I.P. Rights LLC. Mr. Reeling?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. This matter involves a trademark license agreement between the city of Fredericksburg and S.I.P. Rights LLC, which is an affiliate of the Silver Companies. This agreement is one of four contingencies to final approval of the Development and Shared Use Agreement with Potomac Baseball LLC. And this agreement represents a fulfillment of the pledge by the Silver Companies to move the Celebrate Virginia After Hours Concert Series to the new stadium. The agreement licenses to the city the exclusive rights to use the registered mark Celebrate Virginia After Hours for recreational and entertainment events at the stadium. S.I.P. Rights will also transfer control over all domain names and social media accounts to use to promote the current Celebrate Virginia After Hours Concert Series. And finally, the agreement includes a non-compete clause for outdoor concerts on land in Celebrate Virginia South under the ownership or control of the Silver Companies. The agreement will run for 30, 30 years and allow for two additional 10-year renewals. This agreement has value to the city, as we'll discuss with the next agenda item, and will help us meet our stadium funding commitment. It will lead to the established concert series being moved to an attractive venue, which should increase the series' already substantial attendance figures. As such, staff recommends the council approve the agreement and substantially the form submitted for approval. Ms. Doolery or I would be. Ms. Doolery, I would be happy to answer any questions you might have. Um, just hat tip to Kathleen for her great work on this, and also David Newman with Silver for helping us shepherd this through the process.
Any questions for Mr. Vreeling? All right. This is a resolution requiring one vote.
Madam Mayor, move resolution approving the Trademark License Agreement from S.I.P. Rights LLC.
Second. Please cast your votes.
Motion passes seven zero.
Item eleven B, Mr. Vreeling.
All right, thank you again, Madam Mayor. Uh, this matter involves a ten-year sub-license agreement with Potomac Baseball LLC that will be a key part of how the city will be able to meet its annual stadium commitment. The sub-license would grant the club the exclusive right to promote the Celebrate Virginia After Hours Concert Series at the stadium, as well as the exclusive right to promote the stadium for events that are classified as paid admission. This would consolidate private market-type events in a single operator, eliminating competition between the club and the city for the same event, and reducing the potential for scheduling conflicts for the venue. Uh, the city will still be able to run community-type events during its promised use of the stadium, which is a hundred and eighty-three days a year. Um, we expect this to involve parks and rec leagues, business meetings and luncheons, high school games, and more. The club will focus on the revenue events with the city as its partner. In exchange, the club would pay the city a hundred thousand dollars a year, fixed amount for the ten-year agreement, for each of the ten-year, ten years of the agreement. Uh, the city would also be able to generate up to another a hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year based on the number of people attending non-baseball revenue events, such as concerts and more, at the stadium. And therefore, the city has the potential to generate up to two hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year from this agreement. Um, we believe that this structure aligns the incentives between the club and the city, and we therefore recommend approval of the sub-license agreement.
Are there any questions for Mr. Vreeling? Again, this is a matter that had been considerably discussed in the course of the negotiations and, um, the development of this, uh, relationship with the owners of the team and the stadium.
Madam Mayor, I'll move the resolution approving a paid admissions event agreement with Potomac Baseball LLC.
Second.
Yep.
Please cast your votes.
Motion passes seven zero.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Newman, and thank you, Madam City Attorney. Item eleven C, Ms. Jett, our Budget Manager.
Good evening. The issue before us is whether City Council should approve an appropriation of ninety-five thousand for storm sewer improvements along the Blue Gray Parkway. There are three locations along the Blue Gray Parkway where storm pipes have failed, resulting in slope erosion, which could lead to impairment of the roadway. The rusted pipes have developed holes and have accelerated the slope erosion and failure. The public work staff desires to have the project completed as soon as feasible and before the closing of the, uh, the Chadon Bridge. This project was specifically identified as a potential use of fund balance when City Council approved the commitment through Resolution eighteen-eighty-one on September twenty-fifth. And due to a revised scope, the project estimate was increased from ninety, to ninety-five thousand from eighty-five thousand. Staff recommends approval of this on, uh, one reading.
Go ahead, Mayor Withers.
Yep. I would move, uh, move for approval, uh, I, I lost it for a second. A first read approving of, of fiscal year two thousand and nineteen budget amendment appropriating, uh, funds for the Public Works Capital Fund for stormwater improvements along Blue Gray Parkway.
Second.
Counsel Duffy.
Um, I wasn't able to ask staff about this. Where did this happen, and is it related to the construction of Blue Gray, Blue Gray Highway? Or, um, does anybody know?
Mr. King gets the hard questions.
Once again, um, that's a very good question. Each of these locations, each of these three locations, generally what's happened are the, the end wall or exit pipes, um, have, um, shifted and, to some degree, have begun to collapse, um, at, at the, at the, um, outflow of, of those pipes. That's, if, this past year has been a record year as far as rainfall goes, and, and, um, the city is, is not a, you know, not the only ones to experience, you know, situations like this. VDOT has, has had a lot of, uh, pipes that have, that have failed in, in areas, roadways that they, that, um, that they're maintaining, and, and we're, again, we're not immune to that, that same type of issue with, with just the, the amount of flow we've seen through our stormwater systems this past year and, and in recent years, there's, there's really been a lot of, uh, deterioration of, of our piping systems. And so this is one we've caught, uh, through some inspection activities and, and wanted to rectify it before it became a much larger situation, which could be a sinkhole or something developing along the road itself.
Right. And so you'll be, um, replacing pipe?
We will be replacing the end pipes, um, at, at the very ends of, of, of the outflows, yes.
And doing something to keep this from happening?
Correct, yes, yeah. We'll be stabilizing it, um, beefing it up a little bit, uh, from what, from its original construction.
Thanks.
Any other questions? All right, motion's been made. Second, uh, Mr. Whitley.
Just to be, uh, clear, this is a, this is a resolution of appropriation under a hundred thousand dollars, and it, it only requires one reading.
Right. So it's not a first read, it's a resolution.
It's a one reading.
Thank you.
And I just want to be clear about that.
Yes. Yes. All right. Any other comments before we take the vote? All right. Please cast your votes.
Motion passes seven zero.
All right. Thank you very much, Ms. Jett and Mr. Whitley. Item eleven D, and we'll call upon our Senior Planner, Mr. Craig.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Uh, there are two special use permits, uh, before you all this evening. Uh, one is for an automotive service use, it's a Valvoline. The other is for a convenience store with gasoline sales, uh, which is a seven-eleven. These items are eleven D and eleven E. With your permission, the technical issues are the same. I'll go ahead and present them both, uh, and just, uh, remind everybody at the end that two separate actions need be taken.
All right.
The City Council held the public hearing on these items on August fourteenth, so it's been a while, uh, since we've gone over this, so I will go back through the presentation just to bring everybody back up to speed. Uh, one citizen spoke against the project at the hearing. Uh, after discussion, the project was tabled. The applicant asked for some additional time to work on, uh, different concepts, uh, for access to the project. They're now ready to move forward, and that is where we are today. Uh, the two uses are proposed on a vacant parcel at the intersection of Fall Hill Avenue and Hospitality Lane. You can see the parcel on the screen here, outlined in cyan. The convenience store with, uh, let me see here. The applicant proposes to split the parcels into three parcels. Uh, two of them are roughly an acre in size, and they'll, we'll go through those now. Uh, the third doesn't have a use assigned to it at this time. Uh, the convenience store with gasoline sales is the, is the first GDP we're looking at here. Uh, it's on the westernmost parcel, so this is Wegmans here, and this is a proposed seven-eleven. Uh, again, it's a roughly an acre in size. This building is about two thousand six hundred and ninety square feet. Uh, these are twelve gasoline pumps here. The automotive service use is Valvoline, uh, is proposed on the easternmost parcel, uh, here, and again, that's about an acre in size. Uh, on that parcel, they propose a twenty-one-hundred square foot service center. Uh, please do note that this is a type D landscaping buffer that would wrap the site here, uh, to help shield the use. Uh, that, uh, both the seven-eleven and the Valvoline are proposed to have a shared access through the existing property, so it would come here, uh, and go here from Fall Hill to Hospitality Lane. Uh, and that would also serve this third parcel to the north, again, that doesn't have a use. And it's that access that's really been the question about the project. Uh, the diagram on the screen includes a green and cyan hatch delineating the landscape buffer required as part of the Celebrate Virginia South Agreement. Originally, the buffer was required, uh, to be fifty-foot wide, contain a berm, and as such, would prevent direct access from Fall Hill Avenue to adjacent property. And the areas colored green, so this area here, and all of this along the frontage here, uh, they still, uh, they still have that fifty-foot width. Uh, and it runs in front of the two banks, as well as the Wegmans. Uh, all those features have been retained. Uh, the cyan portion here, uh, furthest to the east, uh, is narrower. It's between twenty-four and forty-two feet wide. That modification to the buffer was the subject of an amendment to the agreement in two thousand and seven to accommodate the Hampton Inn Suites. There was no access. Uh, but to modify the buffer, an amendment to the side agreement was made. The Celebrate, uh, Virginia South frontage, so from Carl D all the way to I ninety-five, uh, does contain an access point that's not a road intersection. It was built prior to the side agreement, and it's indicated by this orange arrow here at the bottom of the screen. It serves both the Sheets and the Bill Buttram, uh, there. This pink arrow on the diagram here is a ten-foot shared access path, uh, built last side, uh, last year on the north side of Fall Hill Avenue, uh, when the city widened the street. The yellow arrow here indicates the proposed access point. Uh, it would be two hundred and ninety-two feet from the Hospitality and Fall Hill Avenue intersection. It would include a hundred-foot turn lane and a one-hundred-foot taper. Movement would be restricted to right-ins, right-outs. It wouldn't, no one could, uh, take a left or cross the lanes of traffic there. Whether the access should be permitted is debatable. Uh, the proposed access meets standard spacing, taper, and turn lane requirements. Everything VDOT would ask, or our city, uh, road design standards would ask, uh, for that entrance spacing is met. Uh, the access would cross the landscaping buffer that's required by the side agreement. No individual access breaks were permitted along the development frontage for the banks nor Wegmans. They have these two banks, neither has access, uh, nor does the Wegmans. Uh, further, when the city widened Fall Hill Avenue, they closed down commercial access points in order to make a more cohesive trail network, and that's the picture that you see at the bottom. This was the, uh, pre-existing condition. You can see Fall Hill Avenue being widened here, uh, and this is after construction with the access being routed out to Rothman Road. I think a third consideration, uh, about this project is that the convenience store with gasoline sales and the Valvoline are both appropriate for the frontage of a major commercial development, uh, as long as they have the appropriate infrastructure and adherence to the development's vision. I mean, that's, this is the kind of place where these things would go, uh, as embodied by the Sheets, uh, down the street, which is a very similar use, at least to the seven-eleven. Uh, so this is a, a complicated special use permit. There are three draft resolutions, actually four, but three sets, if you will, draft resolutions before you all, and I'll go through each one and kind of where they come from, uh, hopefully answering any questions. Uh, the first resolution follows a Planning Commission recommendation, which is denial of these applications. Uh, the Planning Commission concluded that the access break on Fall Hill Avenue was contrary to city policy, and as a result, there were safety concerns about the single connection point to Hospitality Lane. The second draft resolution came out of the Technical Committee review of the application, uh, that's your, your city staff. It is to approve the project, approve both uses without access to Fall Hill Avenue, uh, with the following conditions: that the applicant study the Hospitality Lane connection and build any improvements needed to make sure that access is safe; uh, that the applicant maintain the required fifty-foot landscaping berm in front of the uses; that the applicant pay the half cost of the signal required at the Fall Hill Avenue and Hospitality Lane intersection prior to opening the stores, and require crosswalks in the development to meet the standards in the side agreement. So both of those recommendations, uh, were developed. The staff recommendation developed first, presented to the Planning Commission. The Planning Commission reviewed the project and made their application. Uh, and then you all had a public hearing on the, on August eighteenth, August fourteenth. Uh, in response to all three of those things, uh, the applicant submitted a letter on September eighteenth. Uh, they proposed to amend the side agreement. Uh, the UDO and the side agreement contemplate Celebrate Virginia South being a unique environment where strong pedestrian and automobile infrastructure are both provided, and the main technical objection to the application at that point was the crossing of the trail along Fall Hill Avenue. So in that letter, uh, to mitigate this issue, the applicant proposed to build additional trails that would integrate the convenience store and service center into the overall development and the city trail network, and that's what you see on this screen. This is an exhibit, uh, that they provided. Uh, here is the seven-eleven, here's the Valvoline, this is an access point here, uh, that is what we're talking about. And what they would do would be to widen the sidewalk along Hospitality Lane, and then either along this side of Carl D Silver Parkway or this side, uh, I'm not sure which latest is, but it is shown on the, on the north, uh, from five foot to ten feet, uh, to get you back to the stadium parcels. Uh, that was one component of their letter. Uh, the second is a twenty-five thousand dollar contribution to extending the trail network along Fall Hill, uh, Fall Hill Avenue, uh, towards Riverside Manor. Uh, so there's a gap in the transportation network coming down this way, uh, and this money would go to the city effort to extend, uh, the trail network there. Uh, these two, uh, sets of mitigation, mitigative, uh, concepts, uh, do, uh, align with what the original vision of the development is contemplated by the side agreement and UDO are. Uh, they are proposed as an amendment. Uh, and this proposal is the reason for the third set of resolutions. They contemplate, uh, the two resolutions contemplate the amendment to the side agreement, uh, that would include the extension of the trail networks proposed on September eighteen, September eighteenth and the approval of the project with access to Fall Hill Avenue. And that approval of the special use permit would also have conditions that, one, the applicant design improvements at this intersection, subject to city approval, uh, to make the trail crossing as safe as possible, uh, the same condition that they, uh, pay the half cost of the signal required at Fall Hill Avenue and Hospitality Lane prior to opening the stores, and the same condition about requiring crosswalks to meet standards in the side agreement. Uh, again, these are two separate special use permits. I've presented them both as one. It's eleven D and eleven E. Uh, they do require separate votes, uh, so you're looking at, uh, eight resolutions there in total. Uh, for your consideration, uh, they are resolutions, they only require one vote. I'm happy to take any questions that you all have.
Counsel Kelly.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'd like, you have mentioned this a number of times in the side agreement and with regards to the, to the, um, no, you started differently. The zoning on the city side of I ninety-five in the area you're referring to where we've made the improvements, what's the zoning classification there as opposed to the zoning classification on the other side of ninety-five?
Okay, so, so Interstate ninety-five to the east where Bragg Hill and the old seven-eleven are, it's a mix, uh, and don't, I think this is right, just in the zoning guide in my head. R twelve and CH.
Twelve, for sure.
The commercial areas, commercial highway, uh, the residential's R twelve.
And on the other side, it's PDC.
On the north, and then commercial highway with proper conditions on the south.
All right. Thank you. Um, in the course of your presentation, you referred to the side agreements, and I'm going to, two things. With regards to Planning Commission, you said the Planning Commission's decision to vote against the application, and I've, I've read it, was listed as safety issues. You just mentioned that the Planning Commission voted it down on safety issues and violation or, or contrary to city policy. What specific policy?
Right. Uh, so the, the policies in place of comprehensive plan, uh, which talks about integrated trail networks, uh, section of the PDC zoning, uh, ordinance which contemplates integrated trail networks, and the way we interpret that, uh, is through, uh, agreements like the side agreement. Uh, and so, when we talked about all this, uh, with, with the Planning Commission, we, we present the side agreement as a city policy. It was agreed to, presumably by the City Council. Uh, and that, uh, side agreement, uh, does not permit the access point. So that would be the city policy, I think, that we're referring to, but coupled with the zoning ordinance and the.
So we're talking about the MOU that was, that was negotiated in two thousand and five?
Yes, that's part of the puzzle, yes, sir.
Okay. Can you point out to me specifically where it says there's no access points from the berm in that agreement? My understanding is it says basically maintain a fifty-foot buffer.
Matt, let me see if I can pull it up.
It says maintain.
What's that?
It says maintain a fifty-foot buffer.
Okay. Do you need me to?
No, you don't need to. I, I know what the answer is. Okay. Uh, okay. You also mentioned that, under normal policy, in normal situations in a project like this, that both VDOT and based on prior conversations with staff, that you would normally request these two access points. In fact, I think we had some discussions trying to get the access points going in behind Wegmans through their loading dock area to give them that access as part of a discussion. Is, is that correct, that basically in a normal circumstances, we would be looking at two access points?
That's a, that's a traffic generation question. Can this use work with one? I think so. I think so, and that's why we would require a traffic study. Does it meet their business model? I don't know the answer to that. I don't know that there's anything technically requiring two access points.
Okay, I'm just, well, the only reason I'm asking that is I've had two meetings with you guys on this, and both times you told me if this had been any other project and there's no berm involved, you guys would look to have two access points. Is that now incorrect, or is that still correct?
So absent, absent the vision that's been established...
Correct. Without, okay, that's where I'm trying to get to.
For a commercial project, and that's kind of that last point I was making. In these major commercial developments, if you're going to meet the access management standards, then we don't make a subjective judgment on that. You meet the standard.
Understood, understood. All right, that's all the questions I have right now, ma'am.
Any further questions for Mr. Craig? Counsel Frye.
Thank you, Mayor Greenlaw. I don't have questions. I just have a few things I want to get off my chest about this. Not necessarily this project. Anybody can buy property and develop whatever they want to. I can't watch this project go if I were making comments about 7-Eleven in general and the fact that, I don't know if it was two years ago I sat here, a year and a half ago when they were shutting down 7-Eleven at Bragg Hill. And to me, this is like corporate redrinsification or whatever you want to call it, because it's like, I'm just looking at it, at it on a scale. I represent this ward or whatever the case, and you have quote-unquote low-income neighborhoods that folks point out whenever it's convenient that this happens over here, this is, these type of people live here. It's all kinds of stuff. Everybody knows the stigma that Bragg Hill gets, but folks fail to, you know, say, well, Bragg Hill was built for homeowners, not apartments, so on and so forth, and these folks came here and lived there, and they owned homes, and they kept a business like 7-Eleven in that little strip mall area they had. They kept that place, they kept that place thriving for 40 years, and then to watch, if, if, you know, from my understanding, it was like a corporate decision from 7-Eleven, the numbers wasn't matching, and there wasn't enough money being generated, but, you know, somebody was making a living for 40 years off of 7-Eleven in Bragg Hill, and I don't like to see anything revamped, and I said it then, and I'm saying it again. I don't like to see anything revamped that could have been reinvested, and it's not to whoever bought this property and wants to bring a 7-Eleven. It doesn't matter. If, my point is, if the 7-Eleven there at Bragg Hill, it was, had more opportunities. You could have added gas there and all kinds of things that could have happened. The, the road was restructured there, and it's, for me, it's sad to watch the, the lower quote-unquote, this is the way that, that it's presented all the time, the lower-class neighborhoods being shunned to the side or pushed to the side, and now we'll reinvest big money, anybody, I don't really care who it is, anybody will, will invest money at the newest, the best, the biggest thing, you know, anywhere in the city. And I just think it's, it's like a slap in the face to folks that are trying to make it, and then it's, those are the folks who had to work in these low-paying places that we're building, and that's just a reality to me. So mainly, my comment on this, it doesn't necessarily have to be about this, but the point that the word 7-Eleven is involved, I just, it makes no sense to me when, when, you know, when, when stuff is shut down and sit in areas, and then you get an open sign from the same company half a mile down the road, on the same side of the road, you know, in a few months with a grand opening, where you go give away Slurpees on 7-Eleven day, you know, when you took it from a neighborhood. So that's, that's, that's my gripe and groan about these type of things that happen. It happens everywhere, and it's, to me, it's not, I mean, you know, I know that 7-Eleven in Bragg Hill was leased, and it's business that goes along with all of that. I just don't like to see anything like this and, and watch it repeat itself over and over again, and then we reinvent neighborhoods when we could reinvest in neighborhoods that are already established. So nothing, maybe off, off-key, Mayor Greenlaw, but I just had to get it off my chest, because I, I hate seeing it.
Well, we have, we have two businesses trying to locate here in yet another location, and I appreciate your comments. I'm not sure they're entirely related, but to the, to the matter of this particular SUP, but thank you, Counsel Frye. Counsel Devine.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'm going to start out by saying I appreciate staff and the applicant and our planning commission, everybody really taking a good, hard look at this and, I guess, trying to make it work. But at this point, I'd like to move a resolution granting a special use permit for an automotive service use for a site located on Fall Hill Avenue near Hospitality Lane with no driveway and with the other related conditions following staff's recommendations.
Second. Motion's been made and seconded. Counsel Kelly.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'll just talk about this one, and it'll obviously applies to both. In my 14 years sitting around this horseshoe, I think I've lost count of the number of times where we found ourselves in this situation of dragging out a process with both sides, trying to find some way to come together to make a project work. This gets back to my discussion with the counsel at the retreat where our relationships with the development community is broken, and frankly, we know that. I'm not, you know, to have this conversation over Valvoline and 7-Eleven is frankly not the projects I'd love to have this conversation about, but, you know, that's, that's what's before us, and the issue is here. We have two businesses that did their homework, looked at it, came in and says, we want to be here, we want to build a project. For the development community, everything is market-driven. They have a project, they bring it forward to us and try to take it down the road. And I know on numerous and numerous and numerous occasions, when we find ourselves in this situation, the initial conversation from the counsel is, well, we don't like this. And the next question is, from the development community, nine times out of 10, is, well, if you don't like this, what do you want? And the answer is consistently, well, we just want something better. We expect something better. We've got a better economy. You don't have to take anything we want now. We can expect things better. That's not an answer. We sat in the planning, in our last work session, not tonight, the one before, when we were doing interviews for the planning commission, and I think everybody agreed that the future development of the city with regards to issues broadband education, you name it, is pretty much going to be defined the next two or three years. I mean, we've got some heavy-duty work to do to get us where this, this city needs to go, and to do that, we need to form partnerships. You know, the fact of the matter is, a lot of things that we would probably like to see there right now may not financially be viable, but to do that and to even have the conversation of trying to get what we want will require us to sit down and have that conversation with the development community and say, well, instead of this, we want this. And the development community is going to tell us, well, guys, you know what, that's a problem, because the market's not here, whatever else like this. If you want this to happen, then you're going to have to do A, B, C, and D, and we have to decide whether we want to do that for the benefit of the city. There needs to be some give and take. We've decided that we don't want to go down that road. In this particular case, I guess, just to put the record straight, you know, everybody keeps talking about the MOU, and the staff has brought it up again as a main issue in their recommendation, a recommendation that goes kind of contrary to what their normal policy is with two entrances in and out in separate locations. That's, that's what it is. VDOT would tell you the same thing, and it comes down to, we can't put a cut into the berm, the MOU, which was negotiated in 2005, and if I'm not mistaken, looking around this horseshoe, the only person in that room when that was negotiated was me. And I can tell you to, you know, we look at it today, and we look at our policies today and say, we've got a great trail system, we want to keep it, and I understand that, and that's, I think, why the applicant in some ways put a lot of stuff on the table to improve that, that situation. 2005, we didn't even know what was going on with Fall Hill Avenue, one. Two, the whole discussion on the berm was basically to shield development, not to access point, wasn't even brought up in the conversation. At no time was it brought up in the conversation, because the key facts back in 2005 were this: we wanted to make sure that no building built in that Celebrate Virginia area would be visible from the river, because we wanted to protect the river. That was a big one. We wanted, we had development standards that we wanted, that we wanted to make sure that they had built into that plan. We wanted basically to define pedestrian access and have better pedestrian access than it's ever had before in most of our other developments in that area. Those were the, frankly, the big three. We also went ahead, and what's interesting about this particular project, especially with the Valvoline, is the commercial high, we had, because it was PDC zoning, which was the broadest commercial zoning we had, we did have concerns about, well, that allows them pretty much to put anything they want in there. We don't want that, so there's a term in the, in the, in the development community that they know called the dirty 30, certain uses that you really don't want to see, and that includes sometimes, you know, garages and things of that nature. So we incorporated that in there, and it stipulated in the MOU that they can only have one automotive-type facility in the entire project. That's it. That's all they would be allowed. That was kind of the focus we were going into at that moment. So to continually come back, and it's been said before that, oh, the MOU says you can't have an access point in that berm, that was never even a part of the discussion in 2005, and it's never been a discussion in any other discussions we've had on this agreement since then. So I just want to take that off and say, that was not the intent, that was not discussed in any way, shape, or form during the course of that conversation. You know, and I know that the vice mayor and I agree with him, when we did the Fall Hill, some of the Fall Hill Avenue improvements down in that section, because again, that was tying into this section. We'd already gotten, the development community pretty much paid for most of the improvements in Fall Hill Avenue in this area in the first place, and we made a decision to cut the access points off on that side, and that's been kind of the view we've had, and, and I think a lot of us have agreed, this side of 95, we want to make sure it keeps the hometown character. Other side of 95 is a commercial zone. It has always been a commercial zone, will always be a commercial zone, and we're off and running, and I look at this side of 95 a little bit differently than I look at the other side of 95. I'm looking at Central Park, Celebrate Virginia, to hopefully, hopefully, with redevelopment and some other things coming down the pike, to give us the resources to protect the historic character on this side. With regards to the trail issue, I wish we had put this much time and effort in deciding what we were going to do with the trails and how we're going to deal with trail impact when we did the Dreamland LLC project, which is downtown, which we kind of went ahead and said, well, it's okay, it's a big project, it's a nice project, we'll make a few changes, put a few lines in there, and boom, we're, we're, we're go. Now we're basically saying we're drawing a line in the sand, so this is where I'm having a little bit of a miss, trying to figure out, when we keep talking about, we have a policy, we have a policy that we want to have a great trail system, fully understand that, I support that, and I've helped a lot over the years in getting the money to pay for a lot of it, frankly, but we also are in the center of an urbanized area, and we also want to be able to pay for our schools, farm, and police and chief. So here we are, looking at this. Again, I know I've talked most to you, and everybody's going, why are we having this fight over Valvoline and 7-Eleven, and I don't disagree with you, but that would have required a conversation months ago, not having another project come for us, people spending a lot of money, going through this agonizing process that we always seem to go through every time there's a project coming forward. That frankly is getting to me, getting to me, to drive me nuts that we keep going in this cycle over and over again on projects. We need to sit down with Silver Complies, you need to sit down with the Mike Adams, you need to sit down with the Children's and whatever, and say, guys, this is what we're really looking for, this is what we want to see, and how can we help you make it happen? Because we are going to have a role in making that happen. Because again, market-driven, and what we're saying, and we have been saying for years, is we don't like market-driven. We want something different. Then what are we willing to do to put into this to make it different? Instead of having groups and individuals spend thousands upon thousands of dollars to come back here and just to hear, well, we don't like your project, we want something better. Well, you need to start telling everybody what we, what do we want is better. Again, we have an opportunity here, but in this particular section of the trail, it goes right into two other roads and then goes out into Bragg Hill. I think it makes perfect sense to take this and bring it around into Celebrate and over into, frankly, I'd like to get it tied in all the way over to the River Trail. If we really want to go into Spotsboro County, does anybody really want to go up into Bragg Road and go to Route 3, or would they rather go down along the river and go into it that way and cut it at some other point? So that's where we're, we're going into in this particular situation. So I realize it's an impact. I, I think everything has been done to make it as safe as we possibly can, or improvements that can possibly be made. Again, I'm not, again, this is not the, the project I want to see, but it's just become another one of those projects that comes before us that we go through the same process over and over and over again, and it's getting real tiring, frankly. Again, we've got a few more years to get our hacks together to figure out what we're going to be in the next 15 or 20 years, and please don't tell me about the comp plan, please don't tell me about smaller area development plans. I think they're a great effort, but that defines how much commercial space we're going to have. It has residential space in it. It doesn't tell us what we're looking for, what markets are we looking for. You know, we're looking at tech zones. Whoopie, everybody has tech zones. What are we going to do to build on those tech zones? Sitting here and just saying, with our hands folded, saying no or yes to things, isn't going to work for us long-term. We've got to get involved in the game, and unfortunately, again, for me, it's, it's, this is not the project that I necessarily want to have this conversation on, but no, there's nothing in the MOU that says anything about cuts. That's an interpretation that we've made since 2005, because I can tell you in 2005, that wasn't even on the radar screen. We were more worried about what the impact was going to be on the river and other things in that area. It's the most commercial-intensive zoning we have, so are we saying now that nowhere are we going to have any curb cuts or anything else like that that may negatively affect the trail? Fine, let's pass that as counsel. Then staff has a policy. Right now, there is no real effective, what I would say, policy to deal with this, because again, everybody keeps referring back to the MOU, and the MOU doesn't say what everybody says it says. The planning commission's vote on this to turn it down was strictly on, well, the applicant says it's going to be unsafe without having the two entrances, so we're going to decide if we're going to vote against it because it's unsafe. I didn't read anything about policy issues, at least not in the minutes. We can go back and listen to the tapes. So again, I mean, I understand this is an all probability to vote it down. I would rather the counsel would just vote it down and not play the little game of, oh, we're actually approving the project, we're not giving the access point, because we all know what this is going to do to the project. So at least man up and say, you know what, we don't like what we're getting, we're going to vote it down, and come back with something better, and not play the game of, well, politically, I can go ahead and cover myself by saying this is okay, and then they can turn around and come back off on us. So that bothers me too, that we're going to go down that road. So with that, obviously, I'm not going to support the motion. Thank you.
Before I call on Ms. Devine, I want to make a, a strong comment here. The use is not in question. The motion is to approve the use. The use is good, it's compatible, it's allowable, it's two good national companies. So let's, let's not mix up our, our efforts here.
Madam Mayor, every conversation I've had with members of this council, it's been they don't like the use. Thank you.
I beg your pardon. Counsel Devine.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I think I'm going to woman up here and answer Mr. Kelly, so it's hard to know where to start, but let me start with, I think we were very clear. We've been talking to the applicant, we've been talking with staff, and I think it's been very clear that as a whole, council has not been favorably considering cutting, you know, the access point off of Fall Hill. I don't think that has been unclear, so I guess I'd like to address some of the issues that you, that you, you know, brought up, which I, I truly think you're just grabbing at straws. I don't think the relationship with the business community is broken. In fact, I think we just talked about how overworked staff, staff has been. We're attracting businesses. You know, I think Mr. Freeland can speak to the fact that it's not broken. Things are moving right along for many businesses. We did just approve the use of this property. We did not approve a break in our newly-created trail that we were very clear about when we designed that and built that, that we wanted it to be a continuous strip of trail. That was very clear to us, that was very clear to the public, and I think that was very clear to businesses, because other businesses have not been cutting it. The banks, we, again, we redesigned around the other 7-Eleven further down. I think it was very clear what our goal was with the pedestrian trail. So, Mr. Kelly, you also are one to rail against special use permits frequently, and so it's very interesting that in this case, you're willing to sort of throw our pedestrian access out the window. Again, nobody's questioning the use of this property. We're questioning the cut into the trail. I know there's been 25,000 offered to put towards completing the trail to Riverside Apartments or Riverside Manor, but that 25,000 doesn't undo the damage that cutting into the trails for this project would do. It just simply doesn't. So we diminish the trails that we already have in order to extend the trails further. That just doesn't work for me, nor does it work for many people in the public. This is an issue that we've heard from a fair amount of people in the public about. We have regular users of the trail, we have regular, you know, bicyclists, walkers, and that's not something they want to see. So again, I don't think this council has been unclear at all. Again, I, I do not think our relationship with the business community is broken. If there's misunderstandings... If there's misunderstandings, I don't think they've been on our part. So that's all I have to say. Thank you very much.
Vice Mayor Withers.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'd like to address some of my friends' comments also. One in particular, you know, 7-Eleven wouldn't have been my favorite place there, but I would never vote against something that's allowable by law. I would never do that. Whether I like it or not, it's, it's not an issue. For me, it's an issue of the betterment of this community. That is an allowable use. The motion is made to allow that use. I would never, ever vote against something that was not in, in, in lawful. I just wouldn't do it. It's just not Billy Withers. So I take some exception to that from my friend. And that's all I would like to say. Thank you.
Counsel Frye.
Thank you, Mayor Granola. I, I'm gonna just, I'm gonna backtrack a little bit myself. Appreciate you, Mr. Kelly, for re-waking me up because I was super tired before you started talking. To my, to my initial comments from the beginning, that, I just want everybody to know, that was backed-up frustration that I just let out. So that's why I said I was repeating myself from a few years ago. And what happens in the community and what happens, I see it happen in a lot of places. So that was backed-up frustration. I, I do believe that, you know, it's, any, especially like, let me say this, there's no way that we are not business-friendly as a council or whatever the case. If you look at what's going on in the city and what's been happening in the city, I remember we had a, a, a long debate about Sedona Tap House, for instance. You know, it almost didn't make it. Folks that remember, we almost didn't get it, overparking and different issues during that time. But obviously, we're thriving somewhere. We just, since I've been on council, we, if, if this baseball thing works out the way that, that it's been presented and, you know, it's one of the biggest things, you know, me sitting here is one of the biggest things happening. If we get the VA hospital, all these ifs, I'm, I'm hoping that folks that have got something to do with the VA hospital listening to this, but we, we obviously doing something. So I wouldn't, me, when I have coffee with folks or, my schedule is seven o'clock in the morning, seven o'clock in the evening. That's what it is. I think anybody who wants to meet with me, they know that. And I'm open and, and I never shut down a project. And this project here, I wouldn't shut down. So Mr. Kelly, I'm just wanting to make a point to that, that I don't agree with that part of us don't, you know, not wanting a, a new project or whatever the case. That's just, that's your opinion. And you never asked me. So to say publicly that you talk to folks and, or you talk to council and they say that, no, I don't like this. That's not true because we never talked. So I want to make that publicly clear because folks in the public don't know what we talk about or what goes on. So if it's out there, you know, then hey, if it's said about me, I'm going to, I'm gonna throw something back at it, simple as that. But I, I think we're thriving and I, I want to, to the Valvoline, knowing this is a two-part deal here, yeah, I love both of the, the ideas of having something. And based on the fact that we just made a big decision to bring more to Celebrate Virginia, it's, it makes more sense to have more opportunities and more options there in, in that location. Of course it does. We have a couple of little spots, three, three lots there, whatever the case, that we'll have some things. So just to be publicly clear, I think we're all open and we all have our interpretations and as representatives elected by the citizens of Fredericksburg, because anybody can be sitting at this seat. Depends on who elects who to get here. So it's, it's our job to make the decision based on what the folks believe that we're the ones sitting here that should do it. So that's all on that one. And Mr. Kelly, thank you for, for waking me up. No hard feelings, but I appreciate it.
Counsel Kelly.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just two quick points. No issues with special use permits. I love special use permits because it gives us some control of the project. Special exceptions, I have an issue with. That, that is, that is not, not a question whatsoever. What I'm talking about with regards to the business community is basically, and I, and this has been the case, we are in, have been, and this has been one of my big B's, pretty much in a reaction mode. We react to projects as they come to us. And our reactions are as what they are. And in this particular case, instead of going back to my original point of being more involved in deciding and getting the future going with the city of Fredericksburg. You know, the projects we're talking about now were, in a lot of cases, for all intents and purposes for us pro forma, in that they'd already been approved or in zoning that they are allowed to do it in. That's, that's up. It's these kind of projects and what's going on there and defining what we are going to be as a city in the future. And again, the big point I made here was, sitting back is not an option. We have to engage. We have to get the vision. We have to say, if we don't want this coming forward, then we want you to look at this. We're not doing that. And I think we do need to be doing that, especially with what little areas we have left to develop. Thank you.
Vice Mayor Withers.
Yeah. Mr. Kelly, I, I take exception to that. You know, we talk to businesses all the time. We, we've given incentives in the last year to at least three companies that I know of. We work with people to try to make this city a, a better city. I, I know developers have a job to do, and so do we. We, we, we need, we try, we strive, right or wrong, to try to make this place, this development that goes on in this town, that's great for everybody, great for the developers and great for the citizens. So, you know, I, I just don't see that, that we're not, we're not business-friendly. I, I just don't see that. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Counsel Graham.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'm not going to keep going on with the comments from Mr. Kelly. More to the, to the project at large. My, my biggest concern with this project from the beginning has been the cutout on Fall Hill Avenue and the inability to mitigate the safety risk that it, that it enables. With the turning from the proposed 7-Eleven onto Fall Hill Avenue, for example, you could think of someone turning out onto Fall Hill. There are cars coming down. I know the speed limit is 35. Unfortunately, people may drive a little faster than that as they're going down Fall Hill, given that it is a four-lane highway at this point. They're going to be driving down Fall Hill Avenue. And a driver exiting the 7-Eleven is going to be looking to their left because the cars are going to be coming so they can make a right turn. If the cutout is approved, there could be a pedestrian or a cyclist trying to cross that intersection. And the motorists leaving the 7-Eleven could very easily hit that pedestrian or cyclist. And there is no signal there to prevent that from happening. And given the traffic demands of a 7-Eleven or a Valvoline, there is likely not going to be any sort of signal that could be put in there. And it is for that reason that I'm going to support this motion because we cannot have a cutout there and maintain pedestrian safety at this time. I don't see a mitigation for it, and that is why I'm going to be supporting this motion. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Graham. Counsel Duffy.
Thank you, Mayor. I would just add that I think we do need to protect the pedestrian thoroughfares to the extent that we have them. And I, I feel like we can do death by a thousand cuts if we're, if we're not careful. I, I also think, I kind of fundamentally disagree with viewing this side of 95 as different from that side. Granted, the other side doesn't have the, the old architecture that we have downtown. But I think that we do need to make sure we're putting in parameters for these places to be a, a high-quality life for those areas. And I, I think we are doing that through our small area plans, too. And I think that's an important way that we're kind of articulating to the business development of, of what we'll want to see. You know, have we done that area yet? No. But it's certainly a process that I appreciate staff has put us toward working on. And that's all I have to say. Thanks.
Thank you. Well, the difficulty and the complication of this has always been the cut. The cut across the Birm, the legality of it, as well as the potential dangerous situation of crossing, crossing the trail and the sidewalk. As I expressed to the applicant early on in the process, I hated to see another cut into Fall Hill Avenue there. It was not something that we had wanted to have. And so I'm going to support the motion, but I can tell you, this has been a very difficult process. And I appreciate the applicant making, going above and beyond, really, to try to mitigate and to offer a walking access, extending the trail toward the, the stadium and, and the other, you know, things that they have offered. And I understand that. And I hope to be able to work with them to make access on Hospitality Lane work. So I appreciate the applicant. I appreciate the businesses who are, are wanting to be there. And as I, as I said before, it's not about the use. It's about the, the, the cut, the access onto Fall Hill Avenue. But I will support the motion. Is there any further discussion? All right, we have, this is the, this is the first one, the auto-beep service, service use, correct? Ms. Devine, is the motion you made? Okay. All right. Please cast your votes.
Motion passes six, one. Kelly voting against.
All right, we have another identical issue here with item 11E that were both presented to you together.
Madam Mayor, move a resolution granting a special use permit for a convenience store with gasoline sales for a site located on Fall Hill Avenue near Hospitality Lane with no driveway.
Second. Please cast your votes.
Motion passes six, one. Kelly voting against.
Thank you. And I appreciate the staff time and I appreciate the applicant's time. Item 11F is a transmittal of the legislative agenda about which we had some discussion in work session. I'll call on Mr. Whitley, our Assistant City Manager.
Thank you, Madam Mayor and members of council. Good evening. Item 11F is the transmitted legislative agenda for the short session coming up that will begin on January 9th. What we'll do is we'll ask council to approve this at the December 11th meeting. So this is a transmittal only. Several items we've identified, some of these are hauled over and some are renewed. We'd identified the support to battle the opioid addiction crisis, support for the Children's Services Act, and specifically establishment of therapeutic public school pilot programs supported by CSA, support for broadband deployment, proper reform of legislation, workforce housing, and also legislation by the, the electoral board has let us know that there's a bill to move primary elections in Virginia from second Tuesday of June to the third Tuesday of June, which would get it out of a conflict with school calendars. We support that. Support additional state funding for shared services and the VML and the VACO Region Seven legislative agendas as well. At the work session, several items were added for consideration. So we'll be drafting some language and some additions to, to the legislative agenda. Support for theater renovations at the UMW campus as a state capital project. Wanted to add possibly, we're not sure yet, assistance to our school board with some legislation to correct a situation they're having, to try to get a waiver from the Labor Day, opening day requirement. Some discussion about the problem or issue of gerrymandering and how we might make that more congruent with different values than, than maybe are used in the past and for different goals. And also pulling up out of the VML legislative agenda and expounding on a local option to ban plastic bags and styrofoam. So those were some things to look at. Have it answered any questions? And this will be back on December 11th.
Thank you, Mr. Whitley. We do, Mr. Whitley and Ms. Dooley, very conscientiously monitor what's going on in the General Assembly for us and, and help us keep in touch with our representatives, our senators and our delegate. And we will be actively following up on these priorities. Mr. Barudy.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just to highlight a couple of issues for the public. I do want to thank folks who did shop downtown on Saturday with Small Business Saturday. We do obviously appreciate that and we ask you to keep it up. We do have four-hour parking throughout the remainder of the holiday season through, in fact, January 31st. So the regular two-hour parking, of course, is four-hour parking the remainder of December and into January, all the way through January 31st. We also have the first three hours of free parking at the Sify Street Garage. Also remind folks that DMV Connect has opened in the city. They're here, the, let's see, the first Thursday of each month. The next time they'll be with us is December 6th. They're at the Executive Plaza and the address is 601 Caroline Street, fourth floor. Again, Executive Plaza, 601 Caroline Street. Again, they're here the first Thursday of each month from 9:00 AM to 3:00 PM. Also remind folks that the Phase Three of our community collaborative conversations are about to happen. They will happen with the assistance of the International Coalition of Sites of Conscience on December 12th and 13th at 6:30 PM at Fredericksburg Library. That'll be on the third floor, again, of the Fredericksburg Library, December 12th and 13th. These are the last of our series of scheduled meetings on this topic related to Phase Three. So please participate. Lastly, I'll remind folks that we've got the Christmas Parade, a big celebration with 10,000 of our closest friends coming to visit this Saturday. So this Saturday at 5:30 PM in the city of Fredericksburg. Gladly highlight that. And lastly, I welcome three new police officers. Officer Hall, Garrett, and Miller have joined our force. Welcome them to the city of Fredericksburg. Thank you, Madam Mayor. Your calendars are...
Are there any questions for Mr. Barudy? Is there anything else to come before this body? If not, we are adjourned.